Good morning. Want to call to order the first meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for the 2018 year. And want to welcome all who've joined with us this morning. And we have some presentations and some folks in the audience that we're going to recognize here in a few moments. But before we start, I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Hopefully 2018 will be a very prosperous and certainly a year filled with many blessings for folks in this room and for our entire community. And so with that then, I'm going to turn to Paula Walton, who's a clerk this meeting today, and I'm sure she'll do just fine. So at any rate, Paula, good morning. And I'll let you call the roll, establish your quorum, and then make some announcements, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance and get right into the order business.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Cerna, Kennedy, Peters, Frost, and Natoli.
Here.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 12th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. Please disable your electronic devices.
Okay, that means turn off your cellphone. So, okay, with that then, thanks for the announcements. If you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and if you do wish to address the board on the item on the agenda this morning, please fill out the speaker form as Paula announced, and we'll call upon you at the appropriate time. All right, with that, we've something that we do annually, rotating the chair, and I'll ask Paula to call that item, but just would note that this is usually done very peacefully, very friendly manner. So there's, with that, Paula, call the item, and then we'll go ahead and go through the motions here.
Election of the 2018 Chair and Vice Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, with that then, the chair would entertain nominations for the 2018 Chair and Vice Chair.
Nominate Susan Peters.
Okay, Chair would second that, and nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
All right, she's our new chair, but before we do that, I'm going to do one other, we'll do the Vice Chair real quickly here, and then I'm going to turn the gavel over to Susan. Okay, do we have a nomination for our Vice Chair?
I'd move Patrick Kennedy for Vice Chair.
Second.
Okay, so moving second to approve Patrick Kennedy as Vice Chair for 2018 year. Nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, we're going to do some change of the seats here and some recognitions very quickly, but I would, just before I turn the gavel over, just would like to thank some of my colleagues this year for their engagement and support, as each of us well knows, certainly as we rotated, and I know that Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Frost will get their turn in the chair, but...
Or barrel.
Barrel, right, in the barrel. But 2017 obviously was a very eventful year, not unlike many preceding years, but I want to thank my colleagues again for their hard work and the energy, and certainly the time we spend in these chambers is only a portion of the time that we spend working together on behalf of the people of Sacramento County, and it's indeed an honor certainly to serve on this Board of Supervisors, but certainly to serve as a Chair of this very important body that I think works together, I don't think, I know it works together very well on many items. We spend many hours in these chambers, but as I said, in our community, we're doing our best to serve the people and the needs of people of this county. And so I want to thank them, I want to thank certainly Nav Gill and the county executive, and certainly all the staff, some of whom were represented here this morning, various departments and so forth. But again, I think we all recognize too that it's not us who get this job done, it's the many thousands of men and women who each and every day carry out the task in this county to serve the people of Sacramento County. And lastly, I would just like to thank my staff. I know that Cheryl Viningas isn't here this morning, she had a medical appointment, but I have both Letitia and Tony from my office, and certainly the two secretaries, I just want to recognize them for their work. And as Supervisor Peters says, when you're in the barrel, you get to do a lot of recognitions, and there's a lot of meetings and correspondence, and all that takes time to coordinate. And so again, I want to thank them and all of you for your good work and efforts throughout the year, and I look forward to a great year in 2018. And with that, I'll turn it over to our new Chair, Susan Peters.
I could say a word before you make a brief recess. Your colleagues appreciate your leadership last year, and as Chair of the Board, you know, we usually kick in a few bucks and give a gag gift, but this year we decided not to give the usual gag gift, so wanted to, I'll give you this to unwrap.
Okay.
And we know you're very passionate about helping the children under the care of Child Protective Services, and especially those kids that can't enjoy the holiday season when they otherwise might. And as you know, Sacramento County's Gifts from the Heart Program help make the holiday season brighter for all those children by purchasing gifts, so each of us on the Board have contributed, and we've sent this contribution to the program on your behalf.
Wow, $160 that helps Santa Claus help the children of our community, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Don.
With that, we're going to take just a brief recess, switch to your chairs, and we'll be back for the main course.
Call the meeting back to order for January 9th.
Yes, Supervisor Cerna, Kennedy, Peters, Frost, Natoli.
Here.
Your consent matters. Items 1 through 44 are in order. I do have a couple notes. Item number 2, I will need a motion to continue to January 23rd. Authorize the Director of Airports to negotiate and execute amendments to the food and beverage concession agreements with food and beverage concessionaries to modify the merchandise and services pricing policy at Sacramento International Airport.
Need a motion, continue.
So move. Second.
First and a second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And item number 9, we're introducing an ordinance to revise Section 2.61.059, Chapter 2.61, to Title II, Administration and Personnel of the Sacramento County Code relating to the award of construction contracts in excess of 100,000 and less than 5 million. And that concludes my notes.
Okay, anyone have any comments on the agenda? Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of quick questions, just back to item 9 for a moment. So what was the, I understand what was being offered here in the ordinance, but what's the reasoning behind that?
Mike Morse, our General Services Director is coming in.
I know we've delegated obviously authority to award, but now we want to delegate authority to reject all bids.
Yeah, it was members of the Board, Mike Morse from the Department of General Services. This was simply a logistics issue. Each time a bid award came forth, if it did not meet the particular criteria in that ordinance, we had to come back to the Board with a separate Board action requesting to allow us to reject all bids and go back out to bid. Just that process can take eight to 10 weeks, and when you're coming into a new construction period, that can be eight to 10 weeks that you lose in the weather or the bidding activity. So the intent here is that within the confines of the Board letter is this would alleviate that amount of time as we would be able to make that determination and go right back out to bid again, submit the communication receiving file notifying the Boarding that that has occurred, and so it just saves that time.
And also Supervisor Natoli just does require written notice back to the Board in the next public meeting.
Yeah, I noted that on the next agenda. So if there are changes in the project scope and/or engineer's estimate, then this is not delegated, it comes back to this Board then?
We make it a criteria of this change, that it cannot have significant scope change or the price is within a certain amount. I believe it's 10% or $500,000, whichever ever is greater, but we did stipulate that it has to stay within the same general scope. For example, if it was to redo the board chambers and going back out to...
Well, that's a good example.
We couldn't decide we're going to put in a million dollars worth of skylights or something, so it still needs to stay within the general scope of the contract.
So if they're digging and they find a pipe that was a surprise, then that would not be a change in scope because it's part of the construction process.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions?
No, just for record though, we're not doing a million dollars worth of skylights in the board chamber, so.
We're not? You got that memo?
No, I didn't see that one.
Okay.
Okay, just one other item, Madam Chair, if I could. Thank you, Mike. Item 3, if I could have you call out that item. Paula, I just want to ask the Airports Director a question on this.
Sure. Item number 3, approve the revised air service development incentive program for Sacramento International Airport.
I did have just a brief chance to talk with John just before the meeting, but this doesn't really give any dollar figures to it, and so I guess my question is, for the record, so an example, you know, landing fees and what this means, because again, there are, it's going to be an incentive, and there are periods of time here, up to two years in some cases, but certainly a year's period as a minimum in this case. So John, could you give an example of, you know, what it would, you know, what this means, and then maybe how many multiple times it would occur, depending upon flight schedules and so forth, so.
John Wheat, Director of Airports, I'd be more than happy to respond to that question. All of our incentives that we've put into place are obviously put into place from a competitive standpoint, but when you look at the dollars and cents of them, every time we bring a passenger into the airport, you look at the fees on average that those passengers would pay, it's about $11 per passenger. So when you look at the incentive program, for instance, a landing fee on a 737-800, which has a capacity of about 179 people, would be about 500, I think it's $534. When you look at just taking the revenue that we're going to take in on passenger fees, I mean, basically parking, rental cars, concessions, things of that nature, the PFC, that is about 1,700 bucks. So on all of the incentives that were out there, we're still making more revenue in that period that the incentives are being provided than the incentives are costing us. So if you were to take a 787-700, it's got a seating capacity of 279, usually on a normal configuration, that's going to generate over $3,000. The landing fee on that type of an aircraft would be about $985.
So it's about 30% roughly offset the incentive versus what...
Right, and then we're, we also on the incentives, there's various incentives that we're paying, for instance, for marketing fees and things of that nature, but when you look at those, those are really maximums. So if you've got a $100,000 marketing fee, if that airline is coming in with brand-new service and they're providing seven-day-a-week service, then they would be eligible for that amount of money. If they're only providing three-day-a-work, three-day-a-week, then they're eligible for that percentage of that money. So, you know, if you just come in for one day or two days a week, you don't get all of the incentives that are shown there, those are the maximums.
Okay, well, I appreciate the explanation, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wouldn't say that it would have been maybe helpful to kind of show that calculation, at least an example, because that wasn't in the staff report.
I apologize for that.
Yeah, that's good, okay.
Thank you. Any other comments on the consent agenda, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, I just wanted to briefly make a comment on item 22, and I wanted to thank staff, County Council's office, as well specifically Mr. Penrose for showing flexibility and working with the applicant under unusual circumstances. It's a very important project for South Sacramento, so I thank you for being as helpful as you were.
Okay, thank you. Would you have a speaker comment on item 23, Rebecca Cothran? Cothran?
Hi, I'm mostly coming here today because...
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Rebecca Cothran. I live in District 1.
Thank you.
And I've been paying attention to what's been going on with Gibson Ranch Park and what you guys have been discussing with continuing the park operations, and my current concern is with Doug Osee saying that he wants to run for California Governor, and I'm concerned about how he's actually going to be able to campaign and maintain the park at the same time. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Leatherman, would you want to comment at all? I mean, it's a long way till November, I would say first, and I think he has a manager.
Thank you, Jeff Leatherman, Director of Regional Parks. Spoken with Mr. Osee, and he does have staff and a manager there on site that can take over duties should they need to in his place, actively working and managing the park facility.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the comments on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Oh, and I have to say, I'm going to recuse myself on item 32, do a potential conflict of interest. Need a motion on the balance of the consent?
So move.
If a motion is second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present, and let it reflect that Supervisor Peters recused herself from item number 32.
Okay. Your next item, please.
Yes, item number 45 is a presentation of resolution honoring Janine Brown upon the occasion of her retirement.
Are you, are you doing it? Because I don't have the resolutions. Would Janine Brown could please come forward? No, just right there in front of the microphones, and Mr. Natoli will be right there.
Woodrow Wilson was quoted as having said...
I'm sorry, we can't hear you, if you could speak into the microphones.
Sorry, I'm loaded the ground. Woodrow Wilson was quoted as having said, "We grow great by dreams. All big men are dreamers. They see things in the soft haze of a spring day or in the red fire of a long winter's evening. Some of us let these dreams die, but others nourish and protect them, nurse them through bad days till they bring them to the sunshine and light, which comes always to those who sincerely hope that their dreams will come true." Janine, in your various capacities, you personify this quote. I estimate the Meals on Wheels program provided more than 7 million meals while you were manager. Beyond that, you had the vision and passion to actualize a program that holistically accounted for the nutritional needs of our uniquely diverse community. In 2008, I was in awe of you and the Meals on Wheels program when I learned the context of how the Pets Eat 2 program came to fruition. Through that program, you enhanced the nutritional health of seniors in our community by also providing meals to pets. With pet food provided, older persons no longer needed to share their meals with their favorite four-legged friends. Beyond recognizing and thanking you today as your supervisor, I wish to congratulate you as my friend and extend my heartfelt wishes for a happy, fulfilling, and free retirement.
You're welcome. A presentation from Mr. Natoli now?
Yes. Well, Janine, good morning to you. Been a long time. We're going to, needless to say, we're going to miss you greatly, and I think certainly Ruth captured a lot of the essence of your work and certainly what has personified, I think, your years of public service, certainly since you came to the county through Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency back in 1990 now. And I know I've had the good fortune, I'm sure other members of the Board have, certainly of, if not working directly with, certainly to see Janine in action over the years, and her passion for certainly serving people in this community, but in large part the seniors and those that have no other means or very little support in their family structure and in their community structure, either by providing meals directly to their homes, but certainly at the congregate sites as well. And Janine followed the progress of that program, the ups and downs, and in the early years, under the umbrella of the SHRA, Janine was working in Nutrition Services Program there, and then the world kind of came crashing down. Well, first it was a transfer to Department of Human Assistance, and then when the recession hit, it hit big, obviously, in many different places. And you know, Janine and certainly Ruth and many associates and people throughout this county spent many hours in these chambers as we debated the viability, the financial ability for this county to support some very critical services for people in this community. And it's disappointing, some decisions were that we made, Janine, certainly and her colleagues, and I know she'll speak in a moment about the folks that she's had a chance to work with, again, worked very closely with this Board, with our community, as we, again, transferred that program to a community provider, Asian Community Services, and who's done certainly a stellar job on the Meals on Wheels, and I think makes certainly this community proud, but I think, Janine, and knowing that, you know, something that she had nurtured and worked to build, and to come before this Board on many occasions, to plead for additional dollars because of the waiting list. At one time, it wasn't like over 1,000 people on the waiting list, or close to it. And recognizing that our ability at times to, you know, juggle all the dollars was somewhat limited. Nonetheless, again, your leadership, certainly in those programs, and obviously more recently with the Retired Senior Volunteer Program, even this current fiscal year, I think some of the things, the support you received to help seniors in isolation, again, is one thing, certainly to provide the nutrition that they need, but also then to do that wellness check-in and to provide some assurance to those who may be homebound or, you know, living independently but in a very vulnerable state. And so, all that being said, I just want to say that I know throughout the entirety of your career, certainly in public service, Janine, you've brought that passion, that dedication to serving folks who, in a lot of cases, were very, very vulnerable, but and to hear the number here that, you know, during your tenure, over 7 million meals were served, that's pretty remarkable. And again, you did it obviously with the help of others, but you were a leader, sometimes very quietly, sometimes not so quietly, because you were a strong advocate for seniors and senior services. And so I'm very pleased this morning, on behalf of this Board, certainly on behalf of the County of Sacramento and its people, to recognize you for your 27 years of public service, certainly in that realm, for your dedication to helping those who, in a lot of cases, were not able to help themselves, and for making a tremendous difference in lives of seniors in our community. I know that, again, beyond just your passion and a deep love for this community and for its people, and so I join with Ruth and with my colleagues on the Board and with the broader community, and certainly wishing you well, congratulating you on a job well done. Of course, jobs are never done, but you're making that handoff, obviously, and wish you certainly good health and much happiness, many blessings in the years to come, because you've been a true blessing to this community, you've been a friend to this community, will continue to be, I'm sure, in whatever ways you continue to carry on your daily life. But I want to thank you so very much, and I know you've done a tremendous job in helping people. Here we go.
Thank you.
Eric wants to take a picture.
Oh, Eric wants to take a picture, okay. And then we're going to say some words.
That's nice.
Okay, Janine, all right, it's your turn.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you so much, everyone, for giving me a reso, and I just wanted to say that I've been blessed with a job with Sacramento County, and I've loved every minute of it. When I started with Sacramento Housing with the Senior Nutrition Program, and then we transferred to DHA, it was a little uncertainty, but, oh my goodness, there's nothing that could have been better for that program, because it wasn't just me and my passion to end hunger and serve isolated seniors, it was really a team, an entire team. The Board members were always there, administration was always there, staff, they'd say, "Oh, really, Janine, you want to do this too?" I'm like, "Yeah." And we, we were really unhappy when we went home on the weekends, because one day, a lady told the driver, she said, it was a Tuesday, and there had been a Monday holiday, and on Tuesday, when he arrived, she said, "Oh, I get to eat today," and it just broke our hearts. So that's when we started with the frozen meal program. We said, "We can give extra meals. They don't cost that much, we're already going to the house." So that was one of the first things that, you know, I just kind of always go to my boss, and my boss would say, "Oh, really, Janine?" Deborah Morrow was always the receiver of that. Morrow was always the receiver of that. Excuse me. But I just wanted to say that it's because of all of you that it made possible everything I've ever done. And it was really unfortunate when the Senior Nutrition Program had to be cut. However, the Asian Community Center were angels and picked it up, and it just stepped. We did 2,500 meals June 30, and they did 2,500 meals July 1. It never missed a beat, and they still have it, and it's still going strong. And then, I was blessed by Paul Lake to go into Senior Volunteer, and there couldn't have been a better transition. It was perfect. And he knew it, and it took me a few minutes to realize that, but it was the same thing, working with isolated seniors. And Nav, he supported the Senior Isolation Initiative, which we now started, and we're going to make sure that isolated seniors want to, not want, are able to, and it's those that make more than the income requirements for public services, but yet don't make enough to buy the same services. And we're now starting the telephone reassurance, home visiting, which will go into the "I need a ride to the doctor" to the grocery store. And it's being done under Senior and Adult Services, and also Retired Senior Volunteer Program. So there are so many things that, so many memories I have that warm my heart, but I won't stop. I'll never stop, you know? I have a passion to end hunger, and be a voice, and work with isolated seniors. And maybe, since I can't advocate as a county employee, maybe now, I can join in the advocacy for homebound seniors.
Okay, Janine, thank you, and we look forward to hearing back from you as a civilian.
Okay.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you. Can I tell one quick, short story? I was always delivering meals, and one time Supervisor Natoli and I walked up to the door with a meal, and we knocked on the door, and the man said, "I just called your office 45 minutes ago." And he said, "Well, here I am. What can I do for you?" Anyway, I want to end on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, congratulations.
Okay.
Next item, please.
Item 46, Presentation of Resolution Congratulating Weave Upon the Occasion of Its 40th Anniversary.
And Beth Hasit?
Natoli has a presentation to Beth Hasit on this item.
Well, good morning, Beth, and certainly, again, good morning to my colleagues and those who are watching. This year is going to be a milestone year for a number of community nonprofits, and those that have served a variety of needs in our community, and Weave is one of those, obviously, we're going to celebrate, certainly today, with our recognition, but I know you probably got some other things that will, throughout the course of the calendar year, commemorate 40 years of serving this community. And I think it goes without saying, obviously, the good work that certainly Beth and her colleagues, that Weave, and I know you've been heading up Weave for how many years now?
Eleven.
Eleven years. And so, again, so for a full 25% plus of the years that Weave's been serving this community, certainly Beth's been at the leadership of that organization. I think, without going into all the whereas, I just would note that Weave, obviously, was established in 1978 as a private nonprofit, and certainly began a journey of some life-changing and very important work in this community, and the numbers of those that have been affected by domestic violence, certainly in offering families, and women in large part, but certainly others, family members, shelter, and, you know, the immediacy of response. And then, over the years, also operating the Rape Crisis Line, in fact, you're the only provider, have been for many years, to offer that service and outreach for folks that are in desperate straits, depending upon their circumstances. Obviously, they come to this organization in seeking assistance, and obviously, shelter, and all the things that go with trying to heal from some very traumatic and violent situations. And so, there's no question, though, that Weave has been stellar in its work. You can't hardly, if there's a new story related to domestic violence, to issues of a policy nature at the state and federal level, whether it's Beth or one of her colleagues, Weave has turned to as spokesperson or organization for, you know, how this community would react, how we would support, or maybe in some cases, oppose some of the actions that might be considered at the state and federal level. But I would just note that, over the course of any given year, you respond to like more than 10,000 calls, you have, you know, approximating some 20,000 bed nights for, you know, women and children, and those that are seeking shelter, other family members. And your intervention in so many different situations, and I'm sure the stories would just, you know, probably break our hearts, but warm our hearts in some cases, of, you know, the help you've provided for folks that have been in very dire straits, but have, you know, obviously been able to heal and recover because of Weave's services. And so, it is my pleasure, on behalf of this board, and certainly on a, more broadly, on behalf of a very grateful community, Beth, to recognize Weave on 40 years of serving this community, and we certainly want to wish you well as you embark upon the next 40 years of doing what you do. And certainly, thank you for your leadership and for your good work over the years. And so, with that, I present this resolution on behalf of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank the county for continued support of our work, so that we can continue to partner with survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and sex trafficking, and ensure that they have the resources they need to move forward. And thank you, too, for the contracts we have. We're very proud to provide counseling to CPS clients who are working to get their children back, to provide housing to victims, and to be the response team that works with the children who are commercially sex trafficked. And thanks to the county for your ongoing support of Weave, and we hope to not be here in 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Item 47 is Consideration of the 2018 Federal and State Legislative Priorities. I need a motion to continue that to January 23 at 10:00 a.m.
P. Gerald Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, our next item is at 10:30. Do you want to go ahead with nominations?
Sure.
Paula, do you know what number that is?
Yes.
Number 52.
Okay, you want to call it?
Yes, item 52 is your nominations. We're continuing to February 27 Cemetery Advisory Commission, Children's Coalition, Human Services Coordinating Council, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Law Library, Board of Trustees, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Paratransent, Rio Linda Elverda Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And today's items, Adult and Aging Commission Supervisor Peters.
Chief's recommend reappointing Leslie Julenell. Please continue the remainder to January 23.
Okay, thank you. Community Service Area Number 4B Supervisor Natoli?
Yes, County Service Area 4B. Nominate the, I can comment, Clarida Alfino.
Okay. Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council Supervisor Natoli?
Yes, would place the nomination Joseph Salmon.
Okay. And we're going to continue the remaining to...
Remainder to February 27.
27, okay. Developmental Disabilities Planning Advisory Council Supervisor Peters.
Chief's recommend reappointing Patty Uplinger to the professional seat, and continue the remainder to February 27.
Thank you. Disability Advisory Commission?
Please continue to February 27.
Thank you. Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board?
Please continue to January 23.
Thank you. Public Health Advisory Board?
Chief's recommend reappointing Dr. Stephen Orkand to the Health Professional Seat, and please continue for the remainder to February 27.
Thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board Supervisor Kennedy?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Laura Bemis and waive process.
Waive the process.
Second.
Please vote. You pulled the screen too fast, sorry. Please vote again.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And then we have District 1, again, District 2, and District 4. We're going to continue, you have no applicants, so we're just going to continue to February 27. Then we have the Sacramento County Treasurer Oversight Committee, and my notes, this is from District 1 Supervisor Serna, he's supposed to appoint Joseph Wilson, and he's going to waive the process.
Does one of us have to make the motion?
I'll move that.
For Joseph Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it. Please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay. Next item's at 12:30. If I can ask, the county executive, does the 10:30 item, will that take 15 minutes?
I don't think so.
Okay, let's call them both for 10:45, and come back at 10:45 then. Okay, thank you. We're recessed until 10:45. The meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for January 9th back to order. Madam Clerk, please reestablish a quorum.
Supervisors Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum. Thank you. Item number 48, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors and the Sacramento County Water Agency, direct staff to proceed with necessary actions to comply with legal requirements to add the Metro Air Park Special Planning and Special Capital Development Fee for the Sacramento County Water Agency.
I've got that power.
There it is. Good morning, Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. The item today is, staff is seeking direction to proceed with a Proposition 218 process for the Metro Air Park Special Planning Area Capital Development Fee. This was, this would be a user fee that's applicable strictly to the Zone 50 Metro Air Park area. Let me pull that map up. The Metro Capital Fee, again, is a user fee that would be collected from customers within the Zone 50 Metro Air Park area to pay for the dedicated capacity in the city of Sacramento's water distribution system. That's the source of water for the Metro Air Park area. The rate would be $7.75 per month for domestic service. There are no planned domestic connections within Metro Air Park, but there's a rate was included in there nonetheless. And then for commercial and all other users, the rate is 33% of whatever their metered Zone 41 service charge is. That's how the Metro Air Park fee would be determined. This fee was actually established by the board in 2005, along with a developer impact fee component that also goes towards paying for capacity in the city system. At that time, both fees were taken through the Government Code 66,000 process, but not through the Prop 218 process. I think at the time, given that there were no customers in Metro Air Park, and it was paired with a development impact fee, the Government 66,000 process was deemed to be appropriate at the time. Since then, staff and council have reviewed that process and determined that to truly enact, to truly enact the user fee portion, we would need to go through the Proposition 218 process to ensure that we followed the proper noticing and timelines for hearings and adoption of the fee. We're not recommending any changes from the methodology that was identified in the 2005 action. We're simply seeking to reenact the fee, again, taking it through the appropriate Proposition 218 process, including direct mail notifications to the property owners in Zone 50, holding public meetings, and other outreach meetings with property owners, having a public hearing, and adoption of the ordinance to establish the fee. Now, we have not charged anybody up until this point, because there's been no customers, but now that we do have a customer established in Metro Air Park, we want to ensure that, moving forward, the fee is in place appropriately so that we can begin charging. So approval of this item would simply kick off the Prop 218 process for the Metro Capital Fee, and we would propose to hold a hearing, not on March 13, actually, on March 20. At the time that the staff report was prepared, we didn't have the new scheduled report meeting, so there was a placeholder date put in, and staff simply didn't go back and circle back to make sure that that was indeed correct. So this would actually be March 20, where we would have the public hearing to consider any protests of this fee. I think, all right, and then, following that, we would have another hearing for adoption, and then we had implementation in early May of 2018. So with that...
Any questions from Mr. Peterson? None?
There are no further questions or comments, I'd like to move the item.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Item number 49, you are introducing an ordinance to revise speed limit on Pringle Avenue, Sergeant Avenue, Oro Road, and New Hope Road, and approve installation of a four-way stop at the intersection of New Hope Road and Sergeant Avenue.
Good morning, Chair Peters, and members of the board. My name is Lou Lee, I'm with Department of Transportation. Today, we're here to present to the board to consider the reducing the current speed limit from 55 to 45 miles per hour on four street segments just outside of City of Galk, in the rural community area. So can I have the overhead, please?
Do you need something different than this?
Oh, may I zoom in a little more?
Can we zoom in a little more? There we go. Maybe a little more. I think it's Metro Cable that had, there you go. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. So this is basically the attachment two of the board package. So the street we're looking at is Pringle Avenue from Christensen Road to McFaulan Street, Oro from Christensen Road to Gulf City Limits, New Hope Road from Christensen Road to Gulf City Limit also. And the fourth piece of this grid system is the Sergeant Avenue from New Hope Road to Live Oak Avenue. The board is also asked to consider the installation of a all-way stop at the intersection of New Hope Road at Sergeant Avenue as a measure of speed control, which is indicated as a star there. So the background to this board package is several requests were made by the area residents to reduce the speed limits on these roads, and to install additional stop signs in an effort to reduce speeding on these streets. In response to these requests, SECDOT conducted a speed study on these roads, and the speed survey resulted... and the speed survey results indicate that the prevailing speed limits, speeds on these streets range from 49 to 58 miles per hour. Speed limits are generally established at or near the prevailing speed, or 85th percentile speed, which is defined as the speed at or below which 85% of the traffic is moving. Under some circumstances, such as higher than normal accident rate, the prevailing speed limit may be reduced by 5 miles per hour. A 5 mile per hour speed reduction, speed limit reduction, is justified for Sergeant Avenue and as well as New Hope Road based on the accident history. After these adjustments are made, the speed survey can only support the revised speed limit of 45 miles per hour on Sergeant Avenue, while a 45 miles per hour speed limit is not supported on Pringle Avenue, New Hope Road, and Orr Road. Speed limits within the City of Galt are set at 45 miles per hour or even lower due to the urban development. A revised speed limit of 45 miles per hour on the subject streets would allow for a better transition from the rural roads to the adjacent street in the urban development, and vice versa. While the speed survey does not support the speed limit change to 45 miles per hour, the Board of Supervisors may consider the community input and also the growth of residential housing along these roads in reaching a final decision. Also, the intersection of New Hope Road and Sergeant Avenue was evaluated for additional stop sign based upon a standard engineering warrants. Based on the existing traffic conditions, this intersection does not meet the requirements for four-way stops. However, the requested all-way stops at this intersection may be considered based on the community input and could be considered as a speed control measure also. So today, the recommendation for the Board is to introduce the ordinance to revise the speed limits on Pringle Avenue, Sergeant Avenue, Orr Road, and New Hope Road. Waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue this matter to January 23rd, 2018 for adoption. And finally, approve the installation of four-way stop control at the intersection of New Hope Road and Sergeant Avenue. So this concludes the presentation. We're available for any questions from the Board or the member of the public.
Thank you. First, a quick question. It says the surveys you conducted do not support the speed limit change, but that the Board of Supervisors can consider community input. So even though the surveys don't support it, you support it for part of one or two of the roads.
Yes, the survey...
Due to what?
The accident...
The accident rate?
Accident rate supports the reduce down to 45 for Sergeant Avenue.
And how close are these roads to the City of Galt where the speed limit is lower?
So if I can refer to the map, so... So the City of Galt, it's just to the east of the roads we're looking at, so...
The bronze colored area on your...
Yeah, in fact, part of the city, right, adjacent to Sergeant Avenue is two roads...
I don't think any of us can read that from here, even on our screens here. We can't read it, so maybe you could use your pencil and point to it?
Yeah. So this is already 45.
Okay.
And this is, in fact, this is also 45, including part of it. In the county, it's 45 also.
And so in going into the City of Galt, the speed limit is what?
This is 45, and then I think the city also steps further down beyond 45. And here, it's 35, and then also potentially go further, even lower into urban area.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of quick things to follow up on. Thanks, staff, for their work. I know that we've had a number of requests over the better part of a year, if not longer, for looking at some of the activity, certainly the accidents that have occurred out there, the speeding that occurs on a real regular basis, probably on a daily basis. And I think as Lou pointed out, with the growth certainly in the City of Galt, and folks, I think, using alternative routes to get to and from not only the city, but Highway 99, Twin Cities obviously is carrying many more cars. We were talking about that earlier this morning. That this makes good sense, and in fact, you know, some of these roads, again, when they're, you know, you see numbers like 1,400 or 1,200 volume per day, it may not sound like a lot as compared to, you know, suburban areas elsewhere in the county, but it is a lot of these rural roads. I know we'll hear from one of the residents who's been very instrumental in some of the conversations on this in a moment. But we, again, I think, one of the things that needs to be pointed out, that these roads are not only rural roads, some cases they're fairly narrow. They have fairly steep roadside ditches. They have many driveways that enter and access both homes, as well as some of the other activities on rural properties. And so the ability to have much shoulder width to, in the event whether it was a speeding incident or a potential accident, to evade those just really doesn't exist. And I did want to, while I get the map up there, ask, and it came out of the conversation this morning, if you can take the pencil, show where Walker Park is there, Lou, on Orr. Right there, yeah, that location, that looks like that car about there. It's a City of Galt facility, a soccer field's there, other active uses of the park. It's fairly heavily used. As a part of this, I think it came out of conversation this morning, I'd like to have us to go back, take a look at a four-way stop there. Currently, we stop the north-south legs of Sergeant, but we allow for free flow in Orr. I think as you both exit the city, where it's already posted for a similar speed limit, but also as you enter that area, and it's not a lot of walk-to activity to that park, but there is a tremendous amount of activity. It's lighted, and so there are, you know, games going on well into the evening. And I would suggest that we ought to look at that location. It may not have the accident history, but nonetheless, I think it makes good sense to look at that location for a stop sign as well, so...
Okay, we'll look into that.
Okay. And lastly, I would just say that I know it's taken a while to get this to the Board. I appreciate the patience of a number of residents from throughout the area, but I think bundling these together gave a fuller picture for my colleagues and certainly for the staff to take a look at. So I appreciate the work that's been done to bring this to us today. And hopefully, it'll help. I think enforcement continues to be an issue. It's a rural area, and you know, when you look at accidents and traffic volumes, obviously the CHP's demand on their time and enforcement activities are pretty limited out here, although they do, I know, work New Hope and Twin Cities roads at times. Some of these interior streets where people live and obviously have their investments in their property and certainly their families and homes, doesn't necessarily get any attention. So I guess posting the speed limit so it is enforceable and in a way that will allow us, hopefully, to advise motorists to be more careful when they're passing through some of these areas. So I'm supportive of this, and we only have many speakers.
Thank you. We do have a speaker, Leanna Bailey-Crimmons. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. Leanna Bailey-Crimmons, Pringle Avenue resident. I want to first extend my appreciation, my personal thanks to the Board and to the Department of Transportation for taking the matters of speed limits in the rural areas seriously. There's been a lot of analysis, and I agree that bundling this into a single proposal is very beneficial to the community. What I'd like to, in addition to what Mr. Senior Engineer, Mr. Lou, had talked about the 85 percentile, I have shared with you a picture of in front of my home. It gives you an example of the narrowness of the road. Pringle Avenue, obviously, there's fairly high speeds. I think the average speed is 51 miles an hour. We did block people going 60. So if this was your neighborhood, I guess pedestrian safety is extremely important. We have 27 homes between Christensen and Sergeant, which is a fairly dense population, 31 driveways. We also have, which is a little bit different than Sergeant, we actually have three access roads coming into, which I don't believe has been expressed. And we also have a narrowing where the easement, right after John Rocha, actually narrows. So right in front of our homes, literally, you're standing on dirt and a ditch, and you're basically getting your mail out of your mailbox. And you like to think that people slow down just when they see a human being on the road, but they don't. We, like any neighborhood, walk our dogs, take our kids for walks, and we think 45 miles an hour is a great start, but we would actually recommend 40 in that particular area. People are using that as a pathway to get to the freeways. And so again, and I am also in complete occurrence with Mr. Natoli about the soccer field. There's people out there all the time, you have kids, people have birthday parties. A four-way stop would help improve public safety in that area. That concludes my remarks, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks, Leanna.
Okay, back, any further questions of staff? Okay, Mr. Natoli?
Yep. No questions. I would move the staff recommendation with the direction to look at the installation of a four-way stop at the intersection of Orr and Sergeant. And just lastly, if we can go back, once we've got this in place, and do some monitoring, see if it actually helps to reduce speeds. I mean, I think to Leanna's comments that, you know, again, we need to have something that's reasonable and that can be enforceable. On the other hand, if this doesn't begin to do some of what it's intended to do, then I think we need to look at some other measures as well. So I would ask that maybe within a, you know, six or nine month timeframe, we get a revisiting of the area, see how we're doing relative to speeds and accidents and such thing.
Chair will second the motion? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, I think that concludes our business for the morning. Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so is, are we ready for closed session?
Yeah, I need to check with outside counsel and see who's there, but I'm pretty sure we are.
Okay, so we're to recess for closed session and be back at 2 o'clock. Board of Supervisors, back to order, January 9th at 2:00 p.m. Item 50, please.
Yes, Supervisors Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli? Serna?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum. Item number 50, appeal of order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs and resolution denying appeal and confirming report of costs by Mr. George Foggi for 8602 Winding Way.
Thank you. We're going to have the code speak first and lay out what they have done.
Thank you. Deidra Andrus, Code Enforcement Manager. Mr. Foggi has been the owner of record for the property located at 8602 Winding Way in Fair Oaks since February of 2003. The home was under foreclosure in January of 2016 and being managed by the Bank of America Property Preservation Unit. Mr. Foggi resumed full ownership of the property in September of 2016. So Code Enforcement case CODX 2016-137 was opened in January 12, on January 12, 2016, as a referral from the Building Department for junk and rubbish and a fallen-down fence. The case was closed for compliance a year later, on January 19 of 2017. An initial inspection of the property on January 13, 2016, found the property vacant to be open and accessible to the public and with an in-ground pool filled with green water. This property was vacant, open, and accessible, and eminently dangerous. There was a public, there was public access to the pool due to the fallen-down fence. These conditions posed a serious risk to public health and safety. The door of the property was secured by Code Enforcement, and the property was posted with a notice to secure the pool area. An inspection fee of $470 was charged. Code Enforcement took proactive steps to abate the nuisance, issuing a directive's determination to authorize the county to abate with fencing. The notice and order was served on all parties of record, including Mr. Foggi, on January 14 of 2016. Code Enforcement fenced the property with county contracted fencing on January 15, 2016 at a cost of $370. In order to secure the county's interest, a notice of pending enforcement action, ANOPIA, was recorded against the property on February 3, 2016, and occurring at a cost of $261. Over the next several months, the county continued to monitor the property. At an inspection on October 17, 2016, Code Enforcement encountered a work crew hired by Mr. Foggi conducting repairs on the property. Code Enforcement observed that the work crew had removed the temporary safety fencing installed by the county, and that portions of the fencing were missing. Code Enforcement spoke with Mr. Foggi regarding the fence panels, advising him that the contractor would be at the property to retrieve the fencing the following day, and that it should be available. Subsequently, Code Enforcement was informed by the fence company that there was no fencing available for pickup at the subject property at the appointed time. Mr. Foggi was contacted via conference call with the fence contractor on the line. During the call, Mr. Foggi was informed that the fencing had been removed and needed to be returned. Mr. Foggi indicated that he could not locate the fence and stated to bill him for it. On November 8, 2016, the county was invoiced $1,255.50, which included the fencing company's maintenance fees for three months and the cost of the missing fence. In addition to the above costs, there was $361.20 in board-approved administrative fees and a title report required for the cost confirmation hearing at a cost of $181. Mr. Foggi elected to contest the cost confirmation hearing, incurring additional cost. He is now appealing the order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs of $4,063.18. Denial of this appeal will confirm all enforcement costs incurred by the county. Staff is recommending that the Board deny the appeal and require Mr. Foggi to repay the county the funds it expended to bring his property into compliance with county code.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Foggi?
Good afternoon, members. So I will be referring mainly to three pages that I've labeled as Exhibits A through C. They are contained in the package that you all have. However, I'm thinking that if you have them in front of you, might make it easier instead of having to ruffle through all the pages. So I have five sets right here.
Could you introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, I apologize. My name is George Foggi, and the owner of the property in question.
Okay, thank you. I'll put five minutes on the clock.
Thank you. How much time do I have? So the basis of my appeal is that the hearing officer basically exceeded her authority to confirm the cost, that issue. Now, first, the cost, that issue, what we're talking about is a few panels of, a few temporary chain-link fences, if you want to call them that, that were installed at 8602 Winding Way at a time when I did not have possession of the property. I came into possession of this property in September of 2016, and the subject fencing was installed in January of that year. Okay? Now, so, three points. Number one, the hearing officer exceeded her powers. What was presented to her at the hearing was only a summary of these charges, and I've labeled that as Exhibit A on the three pages that I've handed you. The second point is that this fencing was not required or necessary, and I'll explain why that was. And then finally, the third point is that no evidence was presented by the county to support these charges. So going back to point one, the fee summary, if you will, that's labeled as Exhibit A, I handed it to you. Aside from being extremely excessive, if you look, there are 16 fees on that page. 16 fees. And what it costs for someone like me to be here in front of you, nice people, is, I added it up, $1,500. $1,510 for me just to be able to be here and ask a few questions. I think that's excessive. We're talking about three temporary panels, three chain-link panels. For somebody to have to spend $1,500 just to be able to be here and ask a couple of questions, it's a little much, because I am paying my property taxes for the county of Sacramento. I think I should be able to be here without spending another $1,500 bucks. But that aside, there are 16 fee charges on this page, fee summary. And if you look to the left, there are invoice numbers starting with 777051. Now, since this whole issue began in September of 2016, you know, we're going on more than a year and a half, I've asked for all the documentation supporting these charges. I've never been provided with the actual invoices. This is just a summary. I don't know if the county has these invoices with them now. I would love to see them, so I can examine them. I don't know whether these... I don't know what these charges are. Presumably, there's an invoice for every of this, for every charge, and they exist somewhere. I would like to have them. I would like to review them, so I can address them. So number one, this cost was validated by the hearing officers, the hearing officer, in the absence of her having the actual invoices. Okay? A fee summary is not sufficient, and it was not sufficient for the hearing officers. I don't believe it's sufficient for you folks today to decide whether these charges are legitimate when you don't have the actual invoices. All right, now moving on. These charges were incurred, or the panels in question were installed in January, January of 2016. As I stated before, I was not in possession of the property at the time. County had contact with the bank that was owning the property at the time. So the bank came out, and they did something called winterize. They winterized the property. What that means is they turn off the water, they turn off the gas, they locked the property so no one could have access inside the home, and you have pictures in your packet. And they placed, they installed this pool cover over the pool, so in case somebody did get into the yard, obviously they wouldn't fall in the pool. I'll tell you, when I took possession of the house, it took a professional to remove that pool cover. That is how solid this pool cover was. There's advertising on the net, and they have an elephant actually sitting on this pool cover. That is how strong and solid this thing was. It requires special tools to install the cover and to remove it. So at the time when, when Code Enforcement went out, went there and decided that, you know, some of this fencing was required, the pool cover was already in place. So clearly, there was no need for additional fencing to prevent people from getting to the pool, because the pool was already covered. Okay? Now...
Are you, are you close to finish?
I've got another two minutes, please.
Pardon me?
Yes, two minutes.
Okay, you've had five and a half so far.
Okay, all right. So, now going back to these invoices, you know, Exhibits B and C that I've handed you, these invoices don't make any sense. They're from a company called L&amp;M Rental. I tried to contact them, they never answered the phone. If you look at the invoices, they're quite suspicious. First of all, they're 11 months apart, but it's the same invoice number. You know, it says something called, there's a box in the center that says, "Please note our new address." Okay, people don't have that, 11 months after they change addresses. They may have the first month, but not 11 months later. These invoice numbers don't match with anything on the summary, which is Exhibit A. At the bottom, it says, "Due net in 30 days." So in other words, this company expected payment from the county or from Code Enforcement within 30 days. No payments have been made, and we're two years after the fact.
Okay.
So I have serious reservations about this invoice. I think at a minimum, I would like a copy of the contract between the county and this company, L&amp;M Rental, to see exactly why they charged for this fencing. If you look at the invoices, it doesn't say how many fences they dropped off and how many they picked up, but for some reason, I'm being charged $4,063 for allegedly three temporary chain-link fences that were dropped out of property unnecessarily. So, yes, I have a big issue with this, and that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, mister, I just want to make sure I'm clear then. So, is it that when you took possession of the, the property after it had been fenced some 10 months prior, you're, you never said this, so I just want to be clear. So, were the fence panels there, or you're saying the fence panels were not there?
The fence panels were there, yes.
Okay, so how did they disappear?
I, they, either L&amp;M, or this gentleman that I spoke with, his name is Gennadi. I spoke with him on the phone, and he informed me that the next day he was going to be there at the property to remove the panels. And I guess he did come by, removed them, and then he called back and, and informed me that some of the panels were allegedly missing. But I have no idea how many panels they dropped off in January of 2016, or how many they picked up when they picked them up.
Okay, so your position is, is that whatever was there, was there when you took possession? It may have, it may have comported with what was there in January or not, but that you didn't, you didn't remove the panels, you didn't take them anywhere, you didn't take them down?
No, sir. And if you look at one of the...
I'm looking at the pictures. I'm trying to get some idea, I've been timeframe-wise, but yeah.
One of the pictures actually has the panels on the ground.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah. So, yeah, no, I did not remove the panels. I did not touch any of the panels.
Okay.
There was a lock at the...
Yeah.
And so we opened that to get in, yes, but we didn't remove the panels.
Okay, could I just ask a question of staff? I know this is about confirming...
I want to ask all of them to come up afterwards and respond.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, 'cause I want to get some idea about, okay, all right. That's fine, thanks.
Ms. Frost?
My question's probably to staff.
Okay. What else?
I can ask, I guess I can ask Mr. Foggi. In the report, Mr. Foggi, it says that you had owned the property since 2003.
Correct.
And you stated in January of 2016, you did not have ownership of the, you did not have possession of the property, but you did technically have ownership. Is that correct?
No, that's incorrect, and I'm glad you brought that up.
Did you sell the property?
In foreclosure.
If it was in the process of foreclosure and it wasn't final, then you still had ownership until it was finalized?
That's not what happened.
Pardon me?
That is not what happened. I can explain.
Okay.
So there was some litigation between me and the, and the bank, and we resolved that in December of 2014. The agreement was that they would pay me a sum of money, and I would give the property back to them, starting with January 2015. I did that, that's when I vacated the place. January 2015, I gave up possession of the property. They contacted me back a year and a half later, and said, "Do you want the property back?" I said, "Yes." Paid them, got the property back. So there was a year and a half there that I did not have possession of the property. And there's an agreement, its terms are confidential, I couldn't bring the agreement, but the gist of it is, at the subject times, when these fences were being installed, I did not have possession of the property.
They were installed in 2000, January 2016?
Yes.
But in January 2016, you did take back possession of the property?
No, in September.
September?
Yeah, nine months after.
And was your name recorded off the property? Was the recording, was it, was this a transaction recorded?
Yes, yes. At the time of the settlement in December of 2014, documents were signed whereby I gave the property back to the bank, and they were supposed to record some documents. I don't know whether they did or not. I continued to receive mail, I'll admit to that, as if I was the owner.
Okay, I probably have some questions of staff then after that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. You can be seated, and we'll ask staff to come back up.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, it sounds like the bank did not record the property in, into their name. It sounds like the property was still in Mr. Foggi's name throughout that entire period.
That's correct. It never changed title, was always in Mr. Foggi's name since 2003.
So the bank took responsibility for the property because no one else was there? They basically took responsibility, but technically, it was still his property?
That's correct. That's why he was given all the notices. He was sent notices as, as the Code Enforcement action was continuing to happen. He was continuing, he was being sent notices about all the things that were happening on the property.
And was he receiving all the notices at the, he was he picking, he said he was receiving mail at that, at the property throughout that time? So he received all these invoices and all the activities on what was happening at the house?
With regard to the invoices, yes. And so actually, what we've had is, not only is the property, as the Code Enforcement action was ongoing, do we send certain documentations to the owner of record, which he was, but we also, at the time when we took the case to cost confirmation, provided copies of all, the entire packet, including the invoices, and provided that for him to be able to review at the hearing, as well as, he's talked with the Department of Revenue and Recovery, and they provided him additional documentation. So I don't know what, what additional documentation he needed to review, but he was provided everything that we had in the packet to review with regard to the invoices.
And then my last question is, I have a swimming pool. My understanding is there are requirements for fencing around a swimming pool, and a pool cover does not replace that requirement or substitute that requirement. You have to have a fence around a pool, is that...
That is correct.
Am I understanding correctly?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And the, and the fencing around the property was, had fallen, so we needed to fence the property.
Thank you.
Mr. Natoli, did you have some questions?
I guess, I just wanted to understand about the fence. I think there's been some clarification relative to possession of the property, even though documents may have been signed, it's still, I guess, for all intent purposes, was Mr. Foggi's property, even though the bank may have made some arrangements that it didn't record. So, how do we determine that the fence, was there a certain number of panels that we signed off on when the code officer, when the fence was initially put in place, and then when they returned to pick it up, they were no longer there? Again, maybe not through no fault of Mr. Foggi's, but if they were on his property, I guess that's how we deal with it. So give me a little bit of understanding about what transpired from January of 16 to October 16, whenever the fence was removed, or November.
Sure, the fence was, was installed, and then the Code Enforcement Officer went by periodically to check the property and make sure that was still, that fencing was maintained and the property was still maintained, being secure. When he went by the property the day before, those are the pictures you see, the fence panels, Mr. Foggi had hired, I guess, some contract team to do some work at the property, and they had already started to remove the fence panels, and that's the picture you see where the fence panels are on the ground. At that time, officer, the Code Enforcement Officer noted that it seemed that some of the panels were missing, which is what prompted him to make contact with Mr. Foggi and let him know that they were going to be, the contractor, the county contractor would be at the property the following day and would need to recover all of the fence panels, because we had noted some were already missing. But when the county contractors showed up, the fence panels were not there. And that's why they charged us for the entire fence. We had to pay for the fence because it wasn't there. We'd paid maintenance charges on the fence, but then while the fence is missing, now we have to pay for the fence.
So you're, you're paying for the lost panels?
Exactly.
Three of them?
Exactly. I'm not exactly sure the number of the fence panels that were missing by the time we came back, but I know we ended up having to pay that $12,000.
$1,200.
$1,200, $1,200 for the fence.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Foggi, did you, Foggi, okay? You have two minutes.
Thank you. So, I think we digress from what the point is. The point is that no documentation has been submitted to justify these costs. I mean, this lady just stood up here and told you that she paid $1,200 for these panels. Well, that's not here. There's a fee summary that says nothing's been paid. So...
There is a $1,200 on there, and I don't want to take your time, but there's $1,200 there in the middle of the page.
Right, right. That's a fee due, but hasn't been paid, which begs the question, what is the contract between this company and the county? If these people haven't been paid in two years, I don't even know if L&amp;M is still in business. So, how does this work? These people have an invoice that says payment is due in 30 days, which was generated two years ago. They haven't been paid, but yet I'm being charged 4,500, 40, whatever it is, $4,000 for these three panels. Doesn't make sense.
If you could pause for a second, we'll get an answer to that.
So, so I want you to focus on the lack of supporting evidence. There, there are 16 charges on this fee summary without invoices. I think you all need to have the invoices before you decide whether they're valid or not. I don't think a fee summary is sufficient.
If you could pause for a minute and step back, we'll have Code Enforcement address that.
Okay.
Thank you.
The fee summary provided to Mr. Foggi is for his payment. The county has already made payment to L&amp;M Fencing. These are fees that were charged to Mr. Foggi that he has not paid. That's why the, the fee summary is showing no payment. It's not because the county hasn't taken care of its obligation. To L&amp;M, we have.
And there is an invoice, you said at the hearing, that invoices that matched each of these numbers was made available to Mr. Foggi, or, or provided to Mr. Foggi?
The fee summary was provided Mr. Foggi at the hearing, and he was, he was communicating with Department of Revenue and Recovery with regard to each of the specific charges on the fee summary.
Do we have copies of all the invoices? To his, to his question, that's a very, whether one deems it relevant or not, but that's his question. Or is there, I assume there's a backup document for each of these charges?
For, yes.
And that could be made available to Mr. Foggi?
Yes, we can get it from the Department of Revenue and Recovery.
Okay. Could you do that, please?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. If, any further, County Council?
If I could just bring your attention to Attachment 4 of the board item. The hearing officer makes clear that the binder, the hearing binder, had, at the request of the applicant, that relevant evidentiary documents were provided for the Code Enforcement. It was part of the hearing officer's packet. Attachment 4, the order after hearing to confirm...
So the pages aren't numbered, so it takes us a while to catch up with you, and I'm with you now, okay. Attachment 4?
Let's see, I'm on, on the second page.
Okay.
Prepared a binder, which contained the relevant evidentiary documents. So that was, and that the argument was made by the applicant as to the breakdown, but that the hearing officer found sufficient things there, and that the, the cost was not disputed, and so ultimately decided that the county was entitled to recover these costs. So I think we're rehashing the same events that took place at the cost confirmation hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
That is absolutely incorrect. I've asked for copies of the back and front and back of these checks that were allegedly paid to anyone on this case since the very beginning. I said, "Please send me copies of the front and back checks." I still haven't been provided one.
I don't, I don't think we have to give you the front and back of the check.
Yes.
You've got, you've got an invoice that says it was paid, so...
Well, I don't have an invoice that says it was paid. I have an invoice that says it was due.
It says here that you do.
I'm sorry?
It says in our staff report that you do, that you got a binder with the evidence in it.
With all due respect, that doesn't make it so. I need the actual proof. I would like to see the front and back of the check. Why wouldn't I be entitled to that? Why wouldn't I be entitled to that? What's the difficulty in the county providing me with a copy of a check they paid?
Ask County Council to respond.
So, again, I'm trying to be reasonable. I've attempted to reduce this or negotiate it in some fashion. You're begging me to take it a step further, and I think it's not necessary. I think we can resolve it. These panels cost $80 a panel. I looked into it.
I think we've heard your argument. Thank you. If I could, you could be seated, and we could ask County Council to respond to the front and back of the check question.
Front and back, I mean, certainly he's entitled to any public records that he's made a request for. I don't know that this was a request that was made at that time. I just know that the hearing officer's decision was that she found sufficient evidence for proof of what the county's statement was, and the costs as set forth in the binder of evidentiary evidence.
And the hearing officer is a third party who isn't anyone in this room?
Correct.
Ms. Frost was first.
Was there a paid receipt on those billings? Usually, when you pay a bill, they give you a receipt of payment sometimes?
I would turn to staff.
Was that provided?
For what was in that binder.
Are you concerned, are you talking about the fencing?
All these, all these, in the binder that he received, did, did it show a paid receipt from L&amp;M on all the invoices submitted, or any proof of...
Yeah, we have a contract with L&amp;M Fencing, and we have, we could provide documentation that, that, that they were paid, through our contract. It's not, it's not a check, it's a contractual agreement, and so we have that evidence. And oh, by the way, I just want to also point out that Mr. Foggi did appear at the non-contested cost confirmation hearing, requesting to be, to be heard, which is why he was moved to the contested calendar, but when the contested calendar came up, he was not there. He sent a representative, and that representative did not contest the cost. And again, as, as County Council has pointed out, there was documented evidence of everything that we've charged there, as well as him having additional conversations with the Department of Revenue and Recovery, and I also talked to him about asking for, submitting a public records request for any and everything we had associated with this property. Spoke with him personally, and, and that request has never been...
Thank you very much. Anything further, Mr. Natoli?
Just to be clear, in the, the same attachment 4, it does say, on page three of that same attachment, in the middle of the page, above the subtitle says, "Order." It says, "The property owner requested a breakdown of fees and supporting invoices, receipts during the hearing, this previous hearing in September, but was advised that administrative fees were set by county code and therefore did not have any..." and therefore did not have any corresponding invoices or receipts." So I take it that on this sheet, a number of these things do not have invoices attached with them. They're just a set cost. To the point about fencing or any outside work, obviously that should have an invoice and, you know, some status of that. So a whole lot of these things on this page here don't have an invoice or any corresponding paperwork, except for that they were, I guess, charged off by the department. Is that correct, Robin?
Because they're fees set by ordinance. Correct.
But does there not have to be some record of time or some point of contact? Or, I mean, you just don't, it's just not done by a computer-generated, well, you know, 30 days past, 31st day, we start applying a fee. There needs to be some entry, is there not?
Which the department would have in its possession.
Guys, I just want to be clear about this.
So after the code enforcement officer, let's, for instance, makes an inspection and comes back, we have it into our Acela database, where they enter the fees that they've charged for their particular time or for a particular hearing or particular situation. So that is entered into our database, the Acela.
Okay, and just one other question while you're up to it then. So why the broad fluctuation in what's termed the IT recovery fee? It runs everything from $11, or $9.77 all the way up to, you know, somewhere just shy of $70. So if that's a fee set by ordinance, what is that? I know it's for, I guess, for what it says, you know, information technology recovery fee, but how is it, again, one moment it's $9.77, and then another moment it's $67.77?
It's calculated as a percentage of the fee that's charged. So for instance, inspection fees $470, and so that percentage of that particular fee for the IT fee was $21, and so on and so forth. For every fee that's charged, the IT recovery fee is a specific percentage of that fee.
And that's based on what?
It's based on board-approved...
No, I know ordinance, but I mean, so what's it supposed to represent? More time, more effort? Is it just a percentage to be...
It's a cost recovery mechanism for the use of our Acela system. We apply to all building permits, all permit actions that go through Acela, because that whole system is supported via that revenue source in terms of keeping it up to date and monitoring and administering and managing that system. It's called the IT recovery fee. It's been in place for 18 years, probably, something like that.
But this thing about the percentage, so if you could just help me real quickly on this, so I don't know if you have this in front of you, Mike, but if you're looking at...
It's calculated as a basis of every transaction that goes into Acela. That's why you see it over and over, because those are individual transactions. And each one of those transactions is based on a percentage as a part of the Acela fee program.
But it doesn't reflect any amount of work or any amount of effort? It's just a set percentage?
And it's based on the number of transactions that go through the system, which defines how, so, yeah.
I guess, aside from this hearing, it raises a point with me, I'm gonna look at you now. I think that needs, I'd like to have some further explanation as to, whether it's been around for 18 years or 1,800 years. If it just automatically was charged, I get it. I mean, I've seen it in countless, you know, things that we, you know, come across our desk. But for some reason, I always thought it reflected some sort of relationship to the work. But if it's just access to the system and it's just a sheer percentage, then, you know, I guess I'd like to know about the equity and fairness of how that's done, and maybe it's totally fair, totally equitable. And I'm not talking about Mr. Foggy's case here, I'm talking about in general. So I'd like to have some additional follow-on to that, since it's been...
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Andrews. It seems to me we held the appropriate hearing and with the appropriate notices, and I would move to deny the appeal of order after hearing and confirm report of abatement costs. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item?
Item number 51, Appeal of Order After Hearing to Confirm Report of Abatement Costs and Resolution Denying Appeal and Confirmation Reports of Costs for the Property Located at 7690 Florencia Lane.
Good afternoon, Deidra Andrews for Sacramento County Code Enforcement. Code enforcement cases are taken to cost confirmation hearing only after all of the violations confirmed on the property have been brought into compliance. The purpose of the cost confirmation hearing is for the county to recover the costs that it expended to bring the property into compliance. For the property located at 7690 Florencia Lane, the enforcement case was opened on February 4th, 2016, and the county was not able to close the case to compliance until May 8th, 2017. It took the county 15 months, 12 inspections, only five of which were charged, and a nuisance hearing before Mr. Sharma bought the property into substantial compliance with county code. The county was required to expend resources for this case, five inspections at $335 each, a nuisance hearing at $536.50 for the hearing officer, and $318.42 for the code enforcement officer, a cost confirmation hearing at $515, and a $295 contested fee. Title report at $150, and an OPI at $261. The property owner is responsible to maintain his property in compliance with county code. Since Mr. Sharma took over a year to bring his property into compliance, he continued to accrue charges. He also elected not to pay the fees associated with the enforcement activity, which required the county to take him to cost confirmation hearing. The county incurred $4,092.17 in hard costs to bring this property into compliance and is asking that the board deny this appeal and require Mr. Sharma to repay the county for the funds it expended to bring his property into compliance.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Okay, we can hear from the property owner. Mr.? Sharma? Sorry?
Good afternoon. My name is Madan Sharma, LA construction.
And you're the property owner?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Give you five minutes?
Oh, you gave me five minutes?
We have rules about how long you can speak, and so you have five minutes to make the, have a conversation about why you're appealing the decision.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, actually, I am a builder. I build homes. I am not a rental business. And unfortunately, I bought those property 2002, 2002. And those, the house was empty. Some of the house was empty, and then homeless people get in. I have a tough time to get it out. Even I call sheriff and even ask county to help me out. And what I supposed to do? Then I repaired the house. I spent about $20,000, $30,000 to make a livable the house. Then I turned to be bad rental. He just growing marijuana and other stuff. Then I hired attorney to vet them. He never pay the rent. He make a lot of mess. And then I cleaning up all those things. Then I, finally, I called Mr. Dan Nattoli, and I said, you know, "Mr. Nattoli, I'm in business almost 30, 40 years. I have a really problem. I don't know what to do." He said, "Sharma, you know what to do. You are business. Just go to the county, get the permit, and follow the list and get done." I took his advice. I did exactly somebody told me. And, but I have the permit. I pulled the permit, and I have several inspection, and the final was sign off. And one of the thing is, code enforcement people, without information, without telling me, without make any appointment, they just go, you know, just go and find different thing, different thing, and continues repairing and make a livable. And, you know, that's the kind of, I feel this is injustice for me. And I request the appeal. You know, I spent about $700, $800 to just present my case, myself. But I'm going through. This is, look like discrimination with me. I did exactly, I hear the permit. I wanna show you what I did. How many sign I have? Can you, can I bring it?
Paula, could you help him put that on the white screen? Thank you. Okay, can you, it's on the screen up here. Can you see it?
Can I, can I put one more thing? Can you look at it?
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is my track record. Last 40 year in business, I got a grade almost 100% or 99%. And I never have any complaint against my license since when I'm business. I honestly, I know by business. I try to help people. I always does. But the fine I receive was not justice, you know? That's why I feel, whatever you guys decide, I will honor it. I work with the county and city. Been a long time. I don't wanna argue. I don't wanna fight. I just wanna be fair something, you know? The guy is paying millions of dollar taxes and many, many sense when I'm business. And just couple thousand, three, four thousand dollars. Just kind of harassment to me. That's the reason I've come front of you. I never been there in the desk for that reason, that kind of complaint. I request you, whatever you guys decide, I will honor it. But my feeling inside is not fair with me. Whatever you guys, that's all I wanna say. Look at my track record. I've been, actually, I done, in city, one of the subdivision I make it, and there was a 95 house I built. That was a bad area, flood zoning. And city of Sacramento gave me the award for that, because when I build the, there was Florin and Indian Lane. There was 95 house built. And when I developed the subdivision, and all the neighborhoods started developing, additioning, because the new subdivision come in their neighborhood, almost each and everybody's have a price raised by $30,000 to $40,000. And city of Sacramento, you know, invite me in the office, gave me some appreciation. That's the kind of work I'm doing. I'm not fighting for the $3,000, $4,000. But I just wanna be, whatever you guys decide. Take a look at my record, and, you know, I'm not bad guys, or I'm not doing anything. And that's all I wanna say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have any comments? Anyone else have any? That's Mr. Nattoli.
I would just, to the point that Mr. Sharma made. This is in Supervisor Kennedy's district and was in Supervisor...
Mr. Sharma, you can be seated.
Yeah, and it was actually Supervisor Yee's district at a time when there were some previous issues. But he's exactly correct. When he spoke to me, I said he needed to go ahead and get the permits and get it cleaned up. And, you know, he proceeded to do that. But I think the thing that's kind of missing here, I would just point this out, is that there were costs incurred, Mr. Sharma, before you'd taken those actions. And yes, you got the matter corrected, and there's a recognition of that if the permits are final and so forth. But there were costs incurred, and just because something's corrected and it was actually in the staff report, doesn't necessarily mean the costs are forgiven. And so that's kind of what's before us. Obviously, you've made your case here today. But I would just indicate that, you know, it certainly wasn't upon my advice, but necessarily. But I did tell, you know, tell him very frankly that, you know, again, as a builder, he knew what you've done. There were code violations both within the house, but also on the property. And he, I assumed sufficiently took care of that. I would just note too, and maybe you're aware of this, Supervisor Kennedy, there is a pending development proposal on this property. So I think that, you know, we'll see that at some point in time that Mr. Sharma's bringing forward, so.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Move staff recommendation.
Second?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you for coming.
Item 53 is county executive comments.
No comments this afternoon.
Okay.
54, supervisor's comments, reports, and announcements.
Supervisor announcements. If you could speak into the microphone, Paula. You've been hard to hear today. That's great. Anyone?
I just wanted to comment that we received a letter this last week regarding Mr. Greg Blick, the superintendent of our Ansel Hoffman Golf Course.
Oh, yeah.
On behalf of 600 members and the board at Ansel Hoffman, they commended them on their work at the Ansel Hoffman Golf Club. And I just wanted to say, thank them for their good work and commend them for that. That's it.
No, anyone? Okay. Yeah, I thought that was a nice letter, too. Ansel Hoffman, look, if we could just get the road fixed out there, that'd be, and the fence, that'd be great. Golf course is in great shape. I do have an adjournment today, and in memory of Albert Dreyfus. Last Sacramento, last month, the Sacramento area lost an icon of the architectural community with the passing of Albert Dreyfus. He was a native of Louisiana and moved to Sacramento in 1948, and soon formed with his business partner, Lynn Blackford, the architecture firm of Dreyfus and Blackford. In 1955, they landed a major contract to design the original SMUD building, headquarters building on S Street, which introduced our area to post-war modernist design concepts. Besides SMUD, their firm designed distinctive buildings for IBM, the former Sacramento Union newspaper, the original Nut Tree, the Mansion Inn, the Sacramento and San Francisco airports, and the Calpers headquarters. The firm, under his guidance, received more than 100 awards for design excellence. He was also an early and longtime supporter of the American River Parkway and led the effort to build the initial home of the Effiyah Nature Preserve. His designs really helped shape the vibrant community we call home, and I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Al Dreyfus. No other business before us. This meeting is adjourned.